Honoring pioneers in LA's LGBT movement.
These individuals were out, proud, and fighting for LGBT rights before it was acceptable in mainstream society. Because of their courage, they paved the way for the rest of us to live exactly as who we are today.
We have a lot of work to do to make sure that there is full equality and full justice for everyone.
Those being recognized were Alan Bell, publisher of BLK Magazine, Matt Redmond, founder of AIDS Project Los Angeles, and Carolyn Weathers, publisher of Close-Been Fever Press, who have all seen the struggles of the LGBT community.
I encourage you, there's so much more to do and you will do it. Don't think you don't make a difference.
There was also an unveiling of the LGBT Cultural Guide and Calendar produced by the City's Department of Cultural Affairs.
This month should be more than a month of remembering history. I hope that the Supreme Court will make this a month of making history. And for all of us, we have an opportunity to recognize that struggle we all have as Americans get closer and closer to being who we say we are. A nation that will not judge you by where you've come from or whom you love.
I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
City Hall Tower was also illuminated in rainbow colors similar to the gay pride flag. Well, it's a chance for Angelenos to learn a lesson from LA's own history book as a new Bunker Hill exhibit takes the stage at the LA Public Library. Anna Marcos has the story.
The Angels Flight Railway may not be working, but it's a piece of history that connects the bunker hill of yesteryear to the modern day bunker hill. And now there is something else to connect the old and the new. An exhibit at the LA Public Library called Bunker Hill in the Rearview Mirror.
It just shows you where like all began and it's just, you know, it just shows you where you come from. Like it's exciting to see how LA and Bunker Hill was like built.
Bunker Hill has an incredibly rich history and I also work in the History and Genealogy Department. We get asked about it all the time.
The 33 images here include photos, drawings, diagrams, and news articles from Bunker Hill history, from its heyday in the 1880s when doctors, lawyers, and bankers lived here in stately mansions, to the area's decline and redevelopment in the 60s and 70s.
The houses, the old architecture of the houses, that was all done by hand, you know, not like today where it's prefabricated and machine stamped and so forth. It's all done by hand, so I can appreciate that.
Bunker Hill has changed dramatically over the years. Gone are the old mansions to make way for LA's tallest skyscrapers. Here you'll find everything from the ultra-modern to the historic, such as the LA Public Library behind me.
The history of the downtown library is very interesting to me. I just noticed for the first time all of the architecture and the, just the great history of the place.
For its organizers and visitors, the Bunker Hill story provides another piece in the mosaic that is LA's colorful history. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The exhibit is free and open to the public at the Downtown LA Library branch. While it's a valuable resource in LA's own backyard and city leaders are hoping to give the LA River a huge boost, Rasha Goel has more on the Second Annual River Day. Rasha?
Yana, as part of the ongoing effort to raise awareness about the LA River, Council Member Mitch O'Farrell recently celebrated Annual LA River Day here at City Hall. And really, this event serves as a way to educate Angelenos about the resources that are available along the LA River.
Dozens of exhibitors came out to this year's Second Annual LA River Day at City Hall, put on by Council Member Mitch O'Farrell.
When it was channelized in the 1930s, it really did degrade the habitat and it enabled development to go right up against the river, but it really also kind of killed the river at the same time. So, River Day is a way to promote the fact that we are reinvesting and bringing it all back to life.
The billion-dollar revitalization plan includes enhancing areas along the 51-mile-long river, transforming the channel into an upscale amenity for Los Angeles.
I'm working on enhanced increment financing, which would create a 45-year plan and a permanent revenue stream for all of the things that we want to do at the river. It would call for brownfield remediation, habitat restoration, infrastructure improvements, and it could also go toward low-income and moderate-income housing.
Green spaces, bike paths, and recreational activities are some of the improvements that have been seen along the LA River.
LA River revitalization is one of Mayor Garcetti's top priorities. He joined council members in the valley to open two new segments of the River Bike Path.
The LA Conservation Corps launched the first paddle of the LA River more than four years ago. And so, we're really happy that that has then turned into a river or paddle of the river in the Legion Valley, along with ours in the Sepulveda Basin, and a lot of other recreational and fun activities on the river. So, it's really served to really get people's interest as well as recognize the conservation and environmental importance of the LA River.
According to Council Member Mitch O'Farrell, one quarter of LA's population lives in one mile of the LA River. So, by improving the LA River also means helping improve people's lives. Yana?
Rasha, thanks. And Council Member Tom Labonge was also honored for his continuous support of the LA River. In fact, a portion of the LA River is now open to the public for weekend kayaking all summer long. As Gil Reyes shows us, you don't have to travel out of state or even out of the valley to enjoy this one-of-a-kind water sport.
No, we're not in Lake Tahoe, the Kern River, or even Castaic. We're near the heart of the San Fernando Valley, believe it or not, Lake Balboa. Not far from suburban homes lies this hidden oasis with chirping birds and native plants.
It's fun just to be out here in nature and see different things, you know? Like you don't see this in LA all the time.
Didn't even realize it.
No, I didn't even realize that this was here. It's my first time actually being here, so it's pretty cool.
It is the only city-sponsored kayaking expedition in the San Fernando Valley. The 2015 Paddle the LA River program is off and running, and as you can see, we're off and running with guided tours that will take place Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, practically every weekend till September 20th.
Are we going in?
You're going in the white one?
Area Council Member Nury Martinez helped kick off the program's fourth season. As former executive director of the group Pacoima Beautiful, she's helped maintain this one-and-a-half-mile stretch of the LA River for public use.
So that communities like San Valley and Arlita and Pacoima, that these communities not only would appreciate the natural habitat along the Wash, but also create more activity, physical activity for these communities.
First-time kayaker Anahi Godinez was worried at first. Is it what you expected?
No, I thought it was gonna be like way harder, but it's not.
And then, are you gonna tell your friends?
Yes, of course I'm gonna tell them. I'm gonna go home and put it on Instagram and on Facebook everywhere.
A summer of memories awaits. At the LA River, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The guided trip costs $50 for adults. You can purchase tickets online at paddelthe lariver.org. And this week, we continue our look at how a new city initiative called City Link LA will bridge the gap between those who have internet and those who don't. Checking email or doing a Google search on your smartphone or computer has become part of daily life for many Angelenos. And while access to high-speed internet may not be an issue, it is for many others in the community, creating what's called a digital divide. The term describes a connectivity gap among distinct, mostly low-income neighborhoods. Digital divide experts say this gap is caused by several factors.
Cost is one of the barriers. People who just don't have access to it because maybe there isn't an available offer in their particular neighborhood, or people who just aren't aware of it.
According to recent surveys, about 35% of Angelenos do not have high-speed internet. That's why they have to rely on community centers like the Magnolia Place to get connected. While community centers do offer internet access, computer use and center hours are limited. Other community members who do have a computer or smart device usually end up at libraries in search of free internet.
I can go to a number of libraries around the area. Late at night, you go by and sometimes you see libraries closed, but you see a family in their car connecting to the internet service that's at that library because they're offering what's great, they're offering that free service. But those students are gonna have, you know, are having to travel all the way there just to get that connectivity.
But Council Member Bob Blumenfield and LA Mayor Eric Garcetti want to make sure everyone is connected at home and at work through a new initiative called City Link LA, which will provide high-speed internet and Wi-Fi to residents and businesses throughout all of LA. And for those who don't have computers, city leaders are working on that too through a program called Our Cycle LA, where old city computers are refurbished and then donated to those who need them.
Welcome to your new computer. This is the monitor.
I never had a computer in my life, and this is my first one.
We'll start with the horizontal line.
Computer training is also part of the program, where instructors guide users through the basics. Another step towards getting everyone in LA up to speed with access to vital information.
Critical content that really is going to improve their educational and economic outcomes.
City leaders hope to break ground next year. Now, what does the LAPD and the LA Dodgers have in common? Well, they're both pictured on some new baseball cards. That's the focus of This Week in Tweets.
I'm Charlie Beck, Chief of Police in the City of Los Angeles. We're bringing back one of LAPD's most popular relationship building tools, and that's the baseball cards.
In the 80s and 90s, LAPD officers gave out Dodger baseball cards to kids in our community.
So, we attached that positivity to law enforcement, to police officers, and it motivated me, inspired me to want to be that person.
The Los Angeles Police Department released a video on Twitter promoting its latest effort to strengthen community ties. The LAPD and the Los Angeles Dodgers have come together to create special edition LAPD Dodger baseball cards, bringing back a tradition the LAPD began more than 30 years ago. Back then, the Police Department and the Dodgers launched a baseball card program to create a connection between community and law enforcement. And now, thanks to a contribution from the LA Police Foundation, the program is back. Chief Charlie Beck tweeted hashtag baseball cards are back. Check out the great LAPD video announcing our community partnership with the Dodgers. And the cards are already putting smiles on plenty of kids' faces. Enzo A tweeted a pic of a girl holding an LAPD Dodger baseball card. He tweeted, "Great neighborhood event in Highland Park today, LAPD softball game." He also tweeted a pic of the kid smiling and showing off their new baseball cards. He posted, "Baseball cards for the team." And LAPD 77th Street tweeted an adorable pic of a boy holding up two baseball cards. The post read, "Another happy customer." The cards feature a Dodger player and a member of either the LAPD or the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. And that's a look at This Week in Tweets. While a charter school is honored again for their academic excellence, the City Attorney's Office promotes gun safety, and some low-income families celebrate a new place they can call home. All these stories and more in City Beat. Council Member Mitch Englander recently unveiled an official City of Los Angeles street sign honoring the Granada Hills Charter High School's academic decathlon team, which won its fourth national title in five years. The 2015 sign was placed underneath the 2011, 2012, and 2013 dedications. Englander said the sign will serve as a permanent display of achievement and success to the entire community and future students, that by working together, studying, and persevering, kids can get a great education in Los Angeles and reach their dreams. Granada Hills Charter remains the only charter school in the almost 35-year history of the National Academic Decathlon Competition to claim the national title, and the only public school, traditional or charter, to capture the national title three years in a row, and now four times in five years.
Tommy was five when he killed his two-year-old sister.
With a single shot fired from a small rifle, he received for his birthday.
Los Angeles City Attorney Mike Fuer called for a renewed nationwide commitment to end gun violence during the first-ever National Gun Violence Prevention Day by unveiling a public service announcement urging the safe storage of firearms. This 30-second television spot highlights tragic instances of guns killing children and asks the public to lock up your guns.
Lock up your guns?
Fuer also announced that his office filed misdemeanor charges against 10 people for alleged gun crimes. The gun charges were filed over the past month and vary from unlawful possession to concealment of weapons. At the news conference, Fuer was joined by representatives of Women Against Gun Violence, which produced the PSA, and the Violence Prevention Coalition. The next ciclavia, which opens roads to bicyclists, pedestrians, and other non-car traffic, will be held in Culver City and Venice this summer. The six-mile route will encourage people to walk or bike between Culver City and the beaches of Venice by way of Palms, Mar Vista, and other beachside neighborhoods. Officials said participants will be able to explore diverse neighborhoods, discover new businesses, and even take a dip in the Pacific. The festival is scheduled for August 9th from 9:00 to 4:00 p.m. Community members recently celebrated the grand opening of a new apartment complex for low-income families in Boyle Heights. The 53-unit complex replaces a blighted property that once housed a bar and nightclub. The energy-efficient apartment building will also offer services to residents such as classes in English, parenting, nutrition, health, and finances. More than 2,000 community members applied for apartments.
I'm thankful and I'm grateful that they did this because it's helpful for other people, like especially us, that we don't make that much. And I'm grateful that they thought about us.
The residents said that they wanted to see something positive here, like housing and retail space, and we were able to make that vision a reality.
Officials say they are planning more housing projects that will include the opportunity for homeownership. Never-before-seen photos of Marilyn Monroe now on display, some animated Disney classics come back to life, and Hello Kitty pulls out all the stops for fans. All this and this week's things to do. Here's your chance to see Marilyn Monroe like you've never seen her before. This year marks the 53rd anniversary of Monroe's passing, and the Hollywood Museum is currently hosting an exhibit that runs June 3 until September 22. Highlighting the exhibit will be works by guest author and photographer George Barris, best known for his work with Marilyn and the last photographer to have a session with her before her death. He will exhibit never-before-seen pictures of the Hollywood starlet. On display will be items from Monroe's childhood, film costumes, public appearance gowns, personal clothing, jewelry, furniture, makeup, medication, found on the nightstand the night of her death, memorabilia, and more. The Hollywood Museum is located at 1660 North Highland Avenue in Hollywood. For more information, visit thehollywoodmuseum.com. Experience the joy of film with live orchestral music as the Los Angeles Chamber Orchestra screens animated shorts from Walt Disney Animation Studios, some which haven't been seen in more than 50 years. Conducted by six-time Emmy Award-winning conductor and composer Mark Waters, the orchestra performs live music with cartoons from the Walt Disney Vault and more. Projecting on the silver screen, two previously lost and newly restored Oswald the Lucky Rabbit shorts, Poor Papa and Africa Before Dark. Also premiering are orchestral scores written by Mark Waters. Celebrating its 80th anniversary, Silly Symphony Music Land will be screened for the first time with a live orchestra. Don't miss these timeless classics. The screenings take place on Saturday, June 13 at 7:00 p.m. at the Theater Ace Hotel, located at 929 South Broadway. For more details, visit laco.org/venue. Hello Kitty is hitting the road with her first-ever live entertainment show and North American tour. On June 12 through the 14th, the Fabulous Forum in Inglewood will play host to all things Hello Kitty with a super cute friendship festival. The event will feature live entertainment, cosplay, characters, interactive exhibits, and more. Join the fun, friendship, and festivities with multi-stage live performances, interactive entertainment, fashion, photo opportunities, and lots of special Sanrio surprises. The Fabulous Forum is located at 3900 Manchester Boulevard in Inglewood. For more information and to buy tickets, visit sanrio.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org, and you can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Hola, soy Marisol desde Canoga Park, la ciudad toda americana. Estás viendo LA City View, canal 35. Nuestra ciudad, nuestro canal.
... I want to thank the members who have been here this time. The lodge, you know, five, O'Farrell and Price. Sergeant.
...
...
Sergeant, I need one more. One more member, Sergeant, let me know his ETA. Good morning, today is Tuesday, June 9th. I want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 AM. Madam Clerk, we do, shhhhh. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum, could you please call the roll?
Bloomingville, Bannon, Buscagino, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Carrasco, Coine, Labange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Westen, ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Uh, Carrick's moves, Bannon seconds, next.
Committee resolutions for approval.
Okay, Price moves, uh, Buscagino seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, now by the time of the flag salute.
Okay, if we could all rise, uh, Mr. Price, I'm gonna ask you to lead us in the flag salute.
Right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Price. Madam Clerk, why don't we go through the agenda at this time?
Items one through seven are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, so on, uh, specials? Specials, I don't sue it. Mr. Labange?
I want number, please, move to five, please.
We'll hold five? We're prepared, Mr., I didn't hear you.
Five and seven, thank you.
Five and seven. Mr. Buscagino?
And as well, wanted to hold seven, coming out of public works, thank you.
Okay, alright, let's, uh, hold those items. Mr. Weezer? Item one?
One, please, yes.
Okay, for Mr. Weezer, let's vote on the remaining items. Let us, uh, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, let's move to the second set of agenda items.
Items eight through twenty are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Uh, Mr. Buscagino?
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, if we can hold, um, item ten and also item thirteen for an amending motion.
We will hold ten and thirteen per, uh, Mr. Buscagino's request, Mr. Parks?
I have number eighteen special.
Eighteen for Mr. Parks. Cards?
Cards on item nineteen.
Okay, let's hold nineteen, let's prepare to vote on the other items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes. And Mr. President, the ordinance for item number eight will be held over one week for second reading.
I understand. Fourth with on item fourteen. Okay, can we move on?
Items twenty-one through twenty-three are closed session items, do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Temporarily, let's hold those and move on to the next item.
On the continuation agenda, item twenty-four is an item known as for public hearing, the Department of Building and Safety reports that item twenty-four A may be received and filed as much as a property is an owner-occupied, single-family dwelling and exempt from lien.
You have cards?
No cards.
Let's vote on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, item twenty-five, I guess?
Yes, item twenty-five is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay, specials members, Mr. Weezer?
Uh, I'd like to call out twenty-five special, please.
Twenty-five per Mr. Weezer, let's move on to item twenty-six.
Item twenty-six is an item for which a public hearing has not been held, ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, that item is now before, uh, this body, do we have any cards?
Yes, there are cards.
Okay. That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings council to items called special.
Alrighty. Mr. Labange, I'm told you have a, uh, quick introduction.
Very fine students from John Burrows High School that looks up at that great Koinga Peak, that great mountain in Griffin Park, uh, and their whole class that I'd like to ask the young president, get over here quick right now, this is a young president here, and, uh, he was so impressive in class and you're here today, tell us, introduce your teachers for us.
Uh, hi, so, um, I'm Eddie Soto, I was the president of Junior State of America, a the largest student-run organization for the last term. Our current president is Lulu, she's right here on the left side, stand up. We have some of our officers, and then we have our two lovely advisors, Mr. Knatsel over here. And Ms. Meyer. So we have Oliver in the purple. We have Louis in the white shirt. We have Dominic right there, and Simon.
Alright, John Burrows, thank you so much for all your work, future leaders of America, give him a big hand.
Okay, let's, oh, Mr. Uh, Weezer?
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. President, colleagues, I would, uh, like to take a moment and recognize a very special guest in chambers today, Chairman Shin Bong Lee of Korea LPG Industrial Association, if, uh, you could please stand up. Uh, Mr. ...
Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Key is visiting from Seoul, Korea, he is also the chairman of the Board Citizens Alliance for Fair and Clean Society, and a member of the Board Foundation for Korea-North-South Medical Cooperation, and I want to welcome him to the city of Los Angeles and thank you for your cooperation and, uh, continued, uh, work that we have with the Korean-American community here in the city of Los Angeles in Korea, welcome to the city of Los Angeles, thank you.
Again, welcome, sir, let's, uh, madam clerk, move to item nineteen, Mr. Previn, I have one card on item nineteen, and Eric Previn. Mr. Previn, you're not here? Okay, let's, uh, prepare to vote on this items, item nineteen members, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, let's move on, Mr. Parks, you want to take care of, uh, the item from Friday? So why don't we do, I think that's item twenty-six?
We have cards though, so we'll wait for the card.
I think I have one card.
Yeah, we'll wait for the card, because all we're gonna do is move the, the motion for the hearing.
Are there more cards, I only have one?
Oh no, I'm saying, but that's what, we're waiting for that card to be heard, and then we'll move that motion.
Okay, then I'm gonna call up, uh, Mr. Previn again, he is not here. Okay, then I'll defer to, uh, Mr. Parks, that, uh, Deion on this item concludes it.
Okay, just like to, uh, approve thirteen A from Friday and, uh, set this up for the hearing, and Deion's assured us that we have all the paperwork, uh, and notice for that hearing.
Mr. City Attorney?
The, the notice has been, uh, lined up to be published tomorrow in the newspaper. And, and that's, that was all my responsibility to do that, and now everything else that happens to that, it's not me.
But we're set for the twenty-fourth then by that notice?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, so we just asked that we move thirteen A from Friday and prepare for the mo, the notion, the, um, motion and the hearing on June twenty-fourth?
Okay, so with that said, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And that moves?
And Mr. President, just for clarification, that would adopt, um, thirteen A and B.
Okay. Mr. Uh, City Attorney, can you help with a recommendation, uh, as to how we should proceed with the closed session items? We've held them, but I want to know, can we proceed as is?
I, I would suggest that, uh, the council president requests, if any of the council members want to discuss any of these in, in closed session, if not, then they can be acted on in open session.
Okay, uh, members, we're talking about items twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, they were dealt with in committee, no, they weren't dealt with, with, one of them was dealt with in committee, and we are, we can move forward on these unless there are questions, and then I think I'd ask the clerk, maybe you should give the particulars on these three items?
For item twenty-three, it's a case entitled Paul Navarros versus the City, Environments Fund Insurance Company and American Insurance Company versus the City, and the recommendation would be, um, to authorize settlement in the amount of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars.
Okay, uh, twenty-two?
Item twenty-two is a case entitled Alejandro Rodriguez et al. versus the City, and the recommendation is to authorize payment in the amount of four hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight thousand, plus interest.
Okay, item twenty-one?
And item twenty-three is the case entitled David Postet, Podesta versus the City of Los Angeles, and the recommendation is to authorize payment in the total of settlement in the amount of one million, one hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, I do not see any speakers on the queue, let us open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, let's move on. Item, um, one, was, Mr. Weezer, were you item one? Okay, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and, um, colleagues, I just wanted to bring to your attention the appointment of a, uh, representative to the South Valley Area Planning Commission, uh, and pleased to recommend out of the Planning and Land Use Management Committee, uh, to recommend the reappointment of Ms. Jenny Kim, and Ms. Jenny, could you just stand up? Um, Ms. Kim has served on the South Valley APC since 2013, she brings a broad and nuanced perspective to the commission, and, uh, she has previously served as a transportation commissioner, commissioner in various, uh, nonprofits in the Korean-American community, so we ask for your approval of this reappointment, thank you.
You know what, Mr. Weezer, as I review the, uh, agenda, we can take up, uh, twenty-five as well.
Sure.
So why don't you, uh, present someone, because we all know who he is.
Thank you, and, uh, colleagues, it's, uh, my honor to, uh, ask for the reappointment of Mr. John Mack, uh, many of, no stranger to these chambers, uh, he is being recommended to be a reappointed to the City Planning Commission, as you know, Mr. Mack has a, a long and illustrious career, uh, serving on various commissions for the city of Los Angeles, and his knowledge, uh, institutional, his institutional knowledge, his perspective is highly valued on the CPC, we highly recommend his reappointment, and we thank him for his service, a great Angelino, uh, on this commission, thank you.
Okay, so our chair is recommending a I-vote on both, uh, items, I, no speakers in the queue, why don't we, madam clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
Congratulations. We want to, uh, wait, where's Mr.? Mr. Labange, are you item five? We'll go to thirteen, Mr. Buscaino. Uh, I have one card on that item. So if I could get Ms. Ramirez to come forward, item thirteen. Antonia Ramirez, where are you? Oh, you're still waiting? Okay, then we'll flip back to Mr. Labange. Mr. Labange, are you ready on item five? We're gonna, we're doing item five now, Antonia. When we finish with that, we should be ready.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Labange.
On this item here, this is for specific parking for the Beechwood Canyon area. Uh, there is additional streets that will be added at another, uh, meeting that we have. Because of the success of GPS, it puts people right in the neighborhoods, uh, that usually have only one side of the street parking. And as Inspector Kim will tell you, and the work that they have done in the hillside area, it's very key that we have this balance because it has overwhelmed the community. So I ask for approval on this and for members, and none of you express concern, we will, uh, be sending a request to the Department of Recreation and Parks that they somehow, with DOT, provide van service so there is public access to the public park. But the parking around the Hollywood sign neighborhood of Beechwood is restricted. But hopefully, and Mr. Bonin, you're such a champion for this, that we could get a, uh, a shuttle service from the metro so tourists and others alike could get up to the park without impacting the neighborhood. That's for, for Mr. Ru and his future as the councilman who will take over on the first of July, but I will be asking the Parks Department to pursue that area. This is a DOT matter. I ask for an I-approval. I, thank you.
Okay, on this item, let us, uh, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Forthwith? Mr. Buscaino, why don't we do item ten? And then we'll go to your other item.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. We, um, colleagues, this, um, item before you has to do, um, and helps address our drought issue in the state of California. As you know, we are in the midst of the worst drought in the history of California. And although the, uh, the city of Los Angeles is already doing, um, and going above and beyond the requirements of the state mandate that the governor recently issued, we can and we must do more. Water is a precious commodity and every drop matters. As we, uh, hear, um, from the mayor's initiative and, um, public service announcements, we have Mr. Corret serving, uh, representing us on the water board. Um, ultimately, this is why it's imperative that we recycle water, uh, that was already used or being consumed. And what's, one such way of doing so is taking gray water, which is water that's already consumed for bathing and washing, and black water, uh, wa- water that are, um, from our sewage system and allocating it for industrial and irrigation uses. Now, to be clear, this is not from toilet to tap, as we often hear, which I just, that phrase, I hate that phrase, by the way. It's really derogatory. It's not. This water that, um, in this, the pipe, or purple pipe, is not going to be used for drinking. This is taking water from our sewers and rather than letting, um, go to waste by releasing into the ocean, putting it to use by watering needed agriculture and industry and thus having to use less potable water for such purposes. And that's why I've asked the DWP and Bureau of Sanitation to come here today, um, to report on their recent expansions of the Advanced Water Purification Facility at Terminal Island, Water Reclamation Plant, which we just broke ground with the mayor not too long ago, and also, um, the Harbor Refineries Pipeline Project. So they'll report, um, if I can ask them to please come to the table and give us an update on those two projects. And, um, if you can kindly give us a quick overview of the Advanced Water Purification Facility at Terminal Island and the Water Harbor Refineries Pipeline Project expansions. And, uh, also, we'd like to know when those expansions, uh, sorry, when those, uh, projects are estimated to be completed. And by the way, colleagues, you all have a copy of the report, um, in front of you.
Good morning. Roshan O'Flackey with LA Sanitation. I'm here with Mr. Bill Van Wagner, my colleague from LADWP. Uh, we will give you a brief, uh, ex- overview of the scope and the timeline for this project. Uh, the Advanced Water Purification, uh, Expansion at Terminal Island Water Reclamation Plant will double the production capacity of, uh, existing facility. The existing facility currently produces six MGD of purified recycled water that is currently being used uh, at Dominguez Gap Barrier to prevent seawater intrusion. Uh, what you see in this map is an overview, uh, of, um, the Water Reclamation Plant itself. What is depicted in blue, uh, is the existing facility. And what is, uh, shown in yellow is, uh, the facilities that will be built as a part of the expansion. Is the next slide? Can we have the next slide, please?
Next slide? Thank you.
So this is a design-built project. Um, the project was awarded in April of 2015. The notice to proceed was issued, um, in May of 2015. The construction completion is expected in December of 2016. Contractual performance test would be February of 2017. Operational testing and startup will be spring of 2017. Uh, I will turn it to my colleague, Mr. Bill Van Wagner, to cover the storage and the pipeline.
Thank you, Roshan. Bill Van Wagner, manager of water system planning at LADWP. And if we could have the next slide, please. Um, this slide is a map of the harbor area and we have a number of pipeline projects that we need to get done by 2017 so we can deliver all this additional water we're gonna be getting from Terminal Island Plant. Uh, we have our Harbor Refineries Pipeline Project, which is shown in green on the map. It's about forty thousand feet of pipe. And it's actually completed with the exception of jacking, uh, some pipeline under some intersections. Uh, we have our Machado Lake Pipeline Project, and that's the dashed purple pipe on the map. It's about ninety-five hundred feet of pipeline. And that will loop our system for system reliability as well as get water to Machado Lake. We have some additional proposed pipelines, which are the blue dashed, uh, line on the map. And that's so that we can reach Valero, um, and also provide a second connection to the Dominguez Gap Barrier. Um, we're also looking at storage sites, which is also important for reliably operating a recycled water system. We're looking at two locations. One is an existing reservoir that's out of service, uh, where we can get up to about two and a half million gallons of storage. The other, which is really our preferred option, uh, we've approached the Navy for the Navy Defense Fuel Support Point, San Pedro, uh, which has potential for about tw- twelve million gallons or one day's worth of storage on the system. And, um, they are considering closure of that facility. And we're interested in obtaining a portion of that site for storage if we can get it. Some of the customers that we're working with, that we hope to be serving soon with this expansion, include increased service to the Dominguez Gap Barrier that Roshan mentioned. Um, Air Products, Valero, Praxair, Machado Lake, once this is done, Harbor Gulf, and the Port of Los Angeles Wilmington Waterfront. Those are some of the customers that we're looking at. Thank you.
Thank you. So colleagues, as you know, this, uh, this was a report, a receive-and-file item. Thank you so much for that report. And I don't know, i- if, anywhere you're gonna find the state of California, the, the efforts we're making here to recycle our water, um, specifically to use for agriculture and industrial uses. So this is exciting. This is forward-thinking. I want to thank DWP and the Bureau of Sanitation and the mayor's office, working alongside CD-15 and moving these projects forward. Um, so thank you so much for your report and we can't wait. We know, we love groundbreaking around here, but ribbon cuttings are, are more important. So thank you so much. Looking forward to that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Members, let's prepare to vote on that item. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, I believe we are at twelve members. We have an ordinance that we can take care of?
Yes, that's item eight.
Okay, so on item eight, we want to have a vote on reconsideration. Then we will vote on the item itself. If we could open the roll. Close the roll.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, so now we're actually voting on the item itself. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, Ms. Ramirez, we're gonna jump to your item, which I believe was thirteen.
And, Mr. President, for item thirteen, amended motion thirteen A has been circulated.
Yes, thank you very much. Yes.
It's a shame that we have to carry our bags because there's a lot of theft going on everywhere you go. Thank you. In reference to the Public Safety Committee, I'm disappointed with, um, Mitchell Englander, who's done a lousy job and that's why we are in hell right now with crime. Anyway, first of all, for, um, relative to reprogram, to reprogramming funds for the 2012 Forensic DNA Backlog Reduction Program, um, nothing has been done. We are in a backlog. Why didn't we start weeding out all wetbacks and Latino chango gangbangers in jails, prisons, and, um, juvenile centers? And having them deported, thereby deporting these filthy scummy pigs who thrive like pulga.
She's not talking about this DNA backlog?
Okay, she'll get right back on. Go ahead.
And again, we are in a backlog. Why are we in a backlog? Don't we have enough personnel? And yes, we are inundated with criminals and yet nothing has been done to stop the, the, the backlog. The population with these Latino criminals keeps compounding on a daily basis, City Attorney. How are we going to? How are we gonna deter the DNA backlog? And yet we're receiving funds for this and nothing has been done to deter crimes by doing the forensic DNA back, um, the DNA, um, backlog reduction. I don't get it. So again, why are we not weeding out the criminals that don't belong here? And start taking care of the criminals that do belong here and do the DNA properly? And you will see that everything else will fall into place. We won't have a backlog once we deport these wetbacks and gangbangers.
No, stay on the subject.
Thank you. And again, um, we do need to do something about this. We need ICE at full throttle and the United States military because we are inundated.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Let's, uh, there are no, uh, further cards or members on the queue, so let's prepare to vote on item thirteen. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And that's adopted as amended.
Thank you. Per Mr. Buscaino, forthwith.
And, Mr. President, there was a request to send item nineteen forthwith.
Mr. Parks, I'm sorry, I didn't know that eighteen was a reward motion. We should, uh, uh, take that up now.
Thank you very much. Uh, let me. In behalf of the family and also, uh, LAPD, we're asking for a reward for an incident that occurred on July seventeen, 2014. At twelve AM, uh, the police responded to a report of a shooting in the fourteen-hundred block of West Fifty-first Street in the Vermont Square neighborhood of Los Angeles, where they discovered a sixteen-year-old Larry McKay had been shot by an unknown individual and was pronounced, uh, dead at the scene. Detectives have continued the investigation since July, 2014. And they hope that this monetary reward will help bring information. They have, uh, run out of leads on this case. This is a fifty thousand dollar reward and we ask the public if you have any information to contact Detective Eric Crossen uh, and our detective Fredondo Chavez. Uh, both of them are at Criminal Gang Homicide Division, two-one-three-four-eight-five-one-three-eight-three. We ask for a unanimous vote on this reward motion.
Thank you. Members, let's prepare to vote on that item. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that moves forward. Mr. Buscaino? Item, uh, seven?
Thank you, Mr. President. Items, uh, this, uh, item before you, colleagues, we heard at length in our Public Works Committee, uh, Mr. Price and I, including an hour or so long, public comment. Before us, we have two options for the re, uh, the configuration of lanes on the Hyperion Glendale Bridge as part of a much larger seismic retrofitting project. Now, everyone agrees that this bridge must be seismically retrofitted for public safety purposes. However, there remains a dispute over which lane configuration should be implemented atop the bridge, over which, uh, we heard an hour or so of public comment, not to mention over two thousand pages in the council file. Now, there's also a funding concern as well. The Bureau of Engineering and the Department of Public Works have indicated to us, uh, we, if we were to approve option three instead of option one, it would restart the SEQA process, thereby jeopardizing fifty million dollars or so of funding since, uh, it's unclear whether Caltrans would be willing to extend its deadline once more after already giving an ex- an extension. So my top priority is a seismic retrofitting and public safety of this bridge. The configuration of vehicle lanes, bike lanes, sidewalks, is a community issue, as we heard in Public Works. And I didn't feel comfortable sending this matter to council, adopting BoE's recommendations. Therefore, I want to hear from our, our two colleagues who represent the area and defer to the council members whose districts, um, fall, um, who, this issue falls within. So giving, so much so that it's such a, um, local community mobility issue. So, um, colleagues, I ask that we, we hear from both Mr. Labange and Mr. O'Farrell on this issue. And maybe, uh, if we have any questions from staff, leave there here in attendance, we can, um, answer those questions. Thank you.
Mr. Labage?
Thank you very much. In the nineteen twenties, there was a great city movement for bridges in Los Angeles. From the Riverside Bridge all the way down past to the Olympic Boulevard Bridge. Bridges were built. The great work that's happened on the Sixth Street Bridge, the Spring Street Bridge. All these years that I've been on council and before, we've been dealing with this issue. Due to E-RIP, which took, uh, place where a number of employees in the city were let go, this stalled. Now the time has come to make a decision. This bridge is a memorial to those veterans of World War I. It was built when it was Highway Two, the transverse between Glendale and Hollywood. It was a truck route and still continues to be. Uh, the work that is proposed, six out of the seven recommendations by the community advisory groups have been met. They are not widening, Mr. Buscaino, which I try to communicate to you in committee underneath the Waverly Drive Viaduct. Thus, the option that is so important to us as council members, uh, Tom Labange and Mr. O'Farrell, Mr. President, adopt the Public Works Board, May fifteenth, unanimous recommendation for the Bureau of Engineering, for the MND, for the Glendale-Hyperion Complex of Bridges, and include the recommended plan and approve the project as described with the recommended option one, adopt the indicated monitoring, monitoring plan. So, Mr. Buscaino, on this bridge, are you interested in this or does Mr. Blumenthal have a different idea? Because I'm directing you as the council member, this bridge, at the top of it, is not being widened. So you're gonna put people down on an eighteen-inch curb. So this will, again, allow us to have safety. You have two bikeways in both directions. And additionally, you have lanes that traverse the area. And as the city attorney will tell you, it's important to have safety on those lanes. It's a truck route. There's all kinds of trucks that travel there. And now we're gonna have bike lanes made of concrete that will be safe. So I ask for an I-vote, someone who's worked on this. And in fact, if you go up to where the Cultural Heritage Board used to be on the fiftyth floor, I was able to nominate this with John Rotundi, my high school mate, as a monument back in nineteen seventy-eight. So this is very important now to see it restored, modernized, and made safer for all concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President, and, uh, I will second your motion to adopt the board report, Mr. Labange. I'm gonna go back, and this is gonna be very brief, but I want to go back to nineteen seventy-seven, when Tom Labange, as a deputy, nominated the Hyperion Bridge for a historical landmark. Between Tom Labange and myself, we have about twenty-five years of experience, uh, working. working on the seismic retrofit aspect of the Hyperion Bridge. What you have right now is this. There is no safe way to cross the Hyperion Bridge on foot that exists at all and hasn't since the bridge was built in nineteen twenty-eight. Because of what the outcry that we heard from October of two years ago, when the original proposal, which was this from Bureau of Engineering, put a freeway barrier between four lanes of traffic and a sidewalk on one side of the bridge, and no bike lanes whatsoever, is we listened, heard loud and clear, and for the better part of two years, we landed on this option, which creates for the first time bike lanes in either direction that I'm fighting to be protected. The one deficiency is they're not protected bike lanes yet, but they are dedicated. So we will work to make sure they are protected bike lanes. Creates a pedestrian pathway, a safe pedestrian pathway for the first time in the bridge's history. And also, a secondary, separate footpath that is multimodal for additional bikes and pedestrians, which is the safest way to cross of all. And that is a new accessory improvement to this entire project. So I would urge supporting the collective experience of Councilmember Tom Labange and myself, the bicycling community who's very eager to have dedicated bike lanes for the first time ever, in adopting this. The support in my district is overwhelmingly opposed to an unnecessary road diet. There are between nine and ten thousand cars that travel in either direction on this regional connector across the LA River, the Hyperion Bridge, which also accesses Northeast Division Police Station, which covers both sides of the river. So to needlessly create a regional traffic jam five days a week because of a road diet is just folly. So for the first time, we are able to reach a really good balance here. And I would urge unanimous support for this position, because it is going to change, and open up multimodal transit for the first time ever on the Hyperion Bridge and the new accessory bridge. So I ask for your "I" vote. Thank you.
Okay, and no, shh. Okay, on that, no further speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that passes. Okay, let's keep forthwith per Mr. Labange. That brings us where? Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, that brings council to general public comment.
Okay, I have, I believe, Christine Cantor, Michelle Thrower, maybe? Deborah Murphy? Please come forward.
I'll be waiting for the other people. I'm the third name. Good day, council members. I'm DeBora Murphy, Executive Director of LA Walks and Chair of the City's Pedestrian Advisory Committee for the last seventeen years. We've come a long way to promote walkable Los Angeles. We've adopted lots of great policies, great streets, Vision Zero. However, we've had eighty pedestrians killed in one year. Forty percent of our fatalities are pedestrians. In our Great Streets Plan, we say incorporate safety-related improvements for pedestrians in all street designs and redesigns. We want to prioritize pedestrians and vulnerable users such as children and older adults. Our plan for LA wants to reduce vehicle traffic and increase walking and biking trips by thirty-five percent. We want safety first and a mobility element, a first-class world infrastructure. As Secretary of Transportation Anthony Fox said, at the Complete Streets Conference, "The design of our road system is a reflection of who we are." We want safe sidewalks for everybody, everywhere in Los Angeles now.
Thank you. So if I could have Ms. Cantor, Christine Cantor, Michelle Thrower, George Bizzetti, please, if I call your name, come forward. Sean Meredith, Jeannie Chamberlain? Kath- Kathleen Smith? Keith Plummer, maybe? Luke Clip? Okay, identify yourself.
Good afternoon. My name is Michelle Thrower, and I'm President of Downtown Concierge. We are a shuttle company for the downtown area only. It's free to the people who ride in our vehicles. And I'm here today to, I'm just so frustrated, and I'm hoping that we can, you guys can help. We, first of all, to get a permit, to have a shuttle to begin with in the city of downtown, you are burdened with the chore of defining a need and necessity for the permit. And then they, the Board of Transportation, decides if, in fact, it's a need, and they yea or nay you. So you want to put your best foot forward. And the process is anywhere from three to six months on your first permit. Well, we've had a permit since September. We have contracts with DoubleTree Hotel, Bottega Louis, some large.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, your time is expired. So I need the next speaker. If I called your name, please come forward. You get the one minute. So I'm looking for George Bizzetti. Are you, are you George?
Yes, sure am.
Okay, George.
One second.
Go right ahead.
My name is George Bizzetti. I'm the former Director of Policy for Core California. You certainly know them and Celeste King the fourth. We're the guys who got OPS put into LAPBD because you people didn't take care of business for ten years. Now, here's the bomb. None of you take care of business. You've been notified several times of this. On Cinco de Mayo, five-five-fifteen, at the LAPD Police Commission, for the fourth time, Chief Beck has refused to take a complaint from me. And as a result, they erased the audio of the meeting, people. That's a PC one thirty-two felony. Chief Beck and the Police Commission are felons. It's on their website. I have gone to everybody here to try to prevent a tragedy from happening, and you don't care. Mr. Corret, you're named in it.
Stay.
Mr. Sadio, you're named in it. Goodbye.
Thank, thank you.
Do your job for once.
Thank you. So I'm looking for, is there, is there, no, now you're disrupting. Is there Christine Cantor? Christine Cantor? Sean Meredith? You, Sean? Come forward.
Good morning.
Yes, sir.
My name is Sean Meredith. I live in Los Feliz. Decades of neglect of our pedestrian infrastructure have left our residents to fend for themselves. Only a major ADA lawsuit could get this city to make some bit of commitment to fix some of it. The mayor's Sustainable City Plan, along with pro-pedestrian statements made by the city council, are great, but the reality is starkly different. On my own street, I regularly watch elderly women walk in the street with their walkers because they are unable to navigate over the crumbling, bulging sidewalks. The same holds for the disabled boy on my street, whose mother has to use the street to push him in his wheelchair. This is on a street where cars regularly speed at over forty miles an hour. In the bubble of our cars, we can travel almost anywhere. I implore you to take positive actions to keep our pedestrians safe and improve our pedestrian infrastructure. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Chamberlain, are you Jeannie?
Yes.
Come on.
Yes, I'm Jeannie Chamberlain, from Silverlake. I just want to say thank you very much for passing the health and wellness element of the general plan. I have two fourth graders with asthma and allergies. And, you know, when the pollution counts go up, it impacts how they breathe. It's very important that you address this. And in their plan, it calls for active transportation. This is so important because we now know that the daily mortality rate is directly linked to the amount of pollution in the air. I have two athletic fourth graders that do suffer from asthma in Elysian Valley, just in Echo Park. One fourth grader was not so lucky. And this year, he too, very athletic, played on the football team, ran in his five K to raise money for his school. And unfortunately, he suffered from an asthma attack. And despite medication, he passed away earlier this year. I implore you to put in the active transportation, things that we need, so we can be safe in our communities, so we can take the cars off the road for that first mile and last mile.
Thank you. So do I have a Kathleen Smith, I believe it is? Luke Clip? Luke? Keith? Is there Keith? Maybe you can help me with your last name. Please come forward, sir.
Hi, my name's Keith Pylmers. I'm a resident, yeah, it's a hard one. I am a resident of Los Feliz. And I was recently involved in the project on which you just voted. And I want to speak on a different issue, which is namely that during the Bureau of Engineering's planning, I was shocked at the lack of scientific and technical studies or literature reviews on pedestrian behavior or modeling pedestrian volumes. What I would like to ask is that the council urge the Bureau of Engineering to develop legitimate and thorough standards for planning for pedestrian behavior so that we can have designs that reflect the actual behavior of pedestrians and not wishful thinking and back-of-the-napkin math. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Matthew Mooney? Raise your hand. A Don Ward? Is there a Don Ward? Raise your hand. Miss with the blue? Here, go ahead, Mr. Mooney.
Hello.
Yes, sir.
My name is Matthew Mooney. I'm Silverlake Neighborhood Council Transportation Chair. I also served on the Community Advisory Committee of the issue that you just voted on. I implore the city council to, well, let me back up for a second. You all encourage us to get involved in the process, and which we do. I was involved in the process from the beginning of this issue until the end. And I really do feel that the process has not worked. Outreach was done. We did extensive outreach at the behest of the council members, but yet we were still not listened to. The result of lower voter turnout is the cynical nature of voters believing that their voice is not heard, even when they do become participative. Please listen to your constituents in the future.
Okay, thank you. So was it Mr. Ward? Come forward. And Miss with the blue, your name?
Megan Cavanaugh.
I, I got you. And I'm looking for Michael Atkins. Yes, sir.
My name is Don Ward. I was the Los Feliz Neighborhood Council Appointee to the Citizens Advisory Committee on the Hyperion Bridge issue. The city, the city's been undergoing a sea change. The sea change is that we want more options than just the car to get around. And early on, the people that were riding bikes and walking and the ones that are actually out there experiencing the violence on the streets, we've, you know, we started out as rowdy, as protesters, as people that didn't know what to do with this system. And for this project, we actually engaged the system. We actually went house to house, and we got signatures. We got business letters. We got parent groups, principals. We basically got everything. We got the neighborhood councils voting for this, and we were still ignored. So what do you expect us to do now?
Okay, Mr. City Attorney? Right before you start.
Mr. President, perhaps the speakers should be reminded that the general public comment, period in which we are in now, is reserved for discussion of matters not on today's agenda. The speakers generally can discuss pedestrian cycling, transit, and other issues within the jurisdiction of the city.
Thank you, sir. My name is Megan Kavanaugh. I'm a registered nurse here in the city of Los Angeles, and I have an urgent public health concern. The leading killer of young people is car crashes. With Los Angeles' additional epidemic of hit-and-run, one would presume the city would do all it could to protect vulnerable road users, pedestrians, and cyclists. Some more progressive cities in the region, like Santa Monica, Long Beach, and Pasadena, have made road safety a priority when it comes time to refurbish infrastructure and repave roads. I ask that you also prioritize the health and safety of your constituents as you consider future matters here at the council. Los Angeles considers itself a progressive, modern city. Let's design our infrastructure to reflect that. Thank you.
Okay, so Michael Atkins, is that you?
Yes, it is.
I'm looking for Robert, hold tight. Michael, Robert Pepe, okay. Paul with a long last night. Paul, are you here? Okay. I'll get to the other, and I'm still looking for a Luke Clip? Christine Cantor? Okay, identify yourself, sir.
Thank you. Michael Atkins, I'm an East Hollywood resident. I've been an active community member. I also want to commend the council for the vision that they've executed along the Los Angeles River. I attended last week the LA River Day. And I just want to say that as a young person who's tried to engage people of my generation, and the common response is that we will have no effect in seeing forth the plans that are best for our future, I would ask the council to reflect the message that we're sending to younger members who are joining our democracy and see the same stopgap to affecting the future. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. So Robert?
Yes.
Come on. Followed by Paul.
Good morning, council members. Oh, sorry. The insensitivity on the part of our local council members, Labange and O'Farrell and Mayor Gisetti, to the plight of all pedestrians has been seen again and again throughout Los Angeles. City officials have ignored the lack of sidewalks, of safe sidewalks, discriminatory ticketing of pedestrians of color, and pedestrians of color paying the ultimate price for just walking down the street, such as a young man and son, Azol Ford. As a Silverlake property owner, I'm disgusted by the tremendous financial burden that such lack of caring on all of yours' part has put this tremendous financial burden of one-point-four-billion-dollar Willett settlement. It's time for all of you to get your act together.
Okay. Paul? And if you please pronounce your last name.
Yes, good morning. It's Paul Berelsheimer. I live directly adjacent to Outwater Village. I have for almost twenty-three years, and I have two teenage children. I hope, I wish that we could see Los Angeles continuing to become a city that promotes public safety and equal access for all, regardless of race, ability, disability, income, et cetera, as its highest priority. A forward-thinking city that recognizes that our auto-centric way of life cannot continue to increase, and in fact, is not increasing as people recognize the dangers of climate change and as people have renewed interest in increasing the quality of life in our neighborhoods and not just the ability to get from one place to another via car. And with all due respect to Tom Labange and all the great work that he's done, he's on his way out of the city council. And David Ryu has been elected to represent his district, and David Ryu has expressed strong support for retaining both sidewalks on the Hyperion Bridge. Thank you.
Okay. Now, sir, what is your tan jacket?
Sergio Lombardi.
I don't have a card for you.
I did submit one, sir.
Well, here, come on up. And, and, and your name? I can't hear you.
Bravo, uniform, darling, hotel.
Okay, I'm gonna have you speak, and then I'm gonna go into my other cards. So identify yourself, please.
My name is Sergio Lombardi. I'm a member of the Outwater Village Neighborhood Council. And I'm here to thank the council for their courageous vote on moving this project forward, the Hyperion Bridge, especially Councilmember Tom Labange and Councilmember Mitchell Farrell. This bridge is vital to our interests, and we need to be able to keep this open. Again, I just wanted to put on the record.
You could only talk generally.
You gotta stay on the subject, okay? Or not on the, you can't speak on something that was on the agenda. My bad. Identify yourself.
Russell Buckin, B-U-C-H-A-N. Since I can't speak on anything that's on the agenda, I'll just speak generally. I had a comment, but Mr. Ward and Mr. Mooney said what I had to say much more eloquently, but I'll just summarize it. You told people to work within the system. They worked within the system. The system failed them. Is that general enough for you?
Okay, sir, now, Antonia? Antonio Ramirez? Come on. Mr. Previn? I'll call the cards that I have. Mr. Previn? I do not see Mr. Previn.
Mr. Reston, is my card up there?
Thank you, sirs.
Yes.
Good morning. This morning, I sleep, I am homeless, not because I didn't have a house and not because I didn't have any money, but because I stepped on some political toes. I slept at Little Tokyo, and I had a wake-up call by Officer Cho and Patterson. They were nice, they didn't cite me. They just gave me a warning that I can't sleep there. And I told them that I don't sleep at Union because I ain't a junkie. I'm a law-abiding citizen, and by the grace of God, I don't do drugs. I'm a law-abiding citizen, and by the grace of God, I don't do drugs, I don't smoke, I don't drink, and I'm just a nerd, you know? I'm proud nerd, a Mexican nerd, but I'm proud. Anyway, this morning, actually, I, they had, they broke my, oh, I'm sorry, they broke my wheels, these gangbangers and Africans. There's a lot of Africans from Jamaica or Haiti or Africans, and Latino gangbangers. So what they do, because I'm now on radar, they have cut and sliced my tires. When I'm asleep, they tear all my bags. I end up going to Ralph's to buy another shopping cart. And this is what I carry. I'm clean, I'm neat, and I'm organized. God bless America.
Thank you. Mr. Previn?
Thank you, guys. I'm getting ready to go after the city attorney. I don't want him to be a jackass too, but anybody that has a ticket, and has a hundred-dollar ticket for a $100,000 trial, is getting ready to be a jackass. Who prosecutes people for a hundred-dollar ticket for outside vending for a $120,000 trial? Now, will the sergeant-at-arms come and give everybody a copy of it? A hundred-dollar ticket is costing the city $120,000. I'm a Ninth Circuit winner, I already won this case. Mark Furd, don't become a jackass too.
Okay, no, Mr. Walsh? And Wayne, I don't have a card on you. You submitted, you're as late, but I'm going to let you. You know, once we start, we don't take new cards, but in this case, we shall. Come on, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at J. Walsh Confidential. Just came from the Police Commission meeting. On my website, you can see 10 cops beating the hell out of a black man. I took the picture right in front of police headquarters. You're not going to find this in the LA Times. And incidentally, Whitey Weston here is now the acting mayor, because our AC/DC mayor is in DC afraid of what's going to happen. And we're all going to, they're going to whitewash these cops that murdered Azel. We know that. And the question is, is this city going to blow up? Is this city going to blow up today, or tomorrow, or the next day? But something's going to happen because our madam mayor has, is hiding under a bed with his gay lover in DC. And I'm telling you right now, HollywoodHighlands.com for the information. This city is about to explode because of the racist cops-
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thanks to the Police Commission for leaking the results before they make their decision. This is what I was afraid of when they reappointed Charlie Beck. I knew this was going to happen, but it's even worse, because we're probably going to have another riot, because Azel Ford was murdered. Now, the reason you find his DNA on the gun is because his hands were bleeding already. After he had the shit kicked out of him, and he's bleeding, then he reaches up, and the officer conveniently puts the blood on the gun. As a result, they say that proves he reached for the weapon, justifiable homicide. Horse shit. No. He was murdered. But that Police Commission over there with Steve Silberoff and the chickens over there are going to come home to roost. They're going to say justifiable shooting. But you know what the public's going to say? Torches, baby.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that concludes general public comment. Madam Clerk, that brings us where?
The council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred.
That clears-
Announcements, members, announcements? I don't see any announcements. If we could all rise? All rise for adjourning motions? Mr. Price? Or, we'll start with you, Mr. Price. Oh, wait, we have an announcement. Mr., no, do your announcement.
I just wanted to invite neighbors and friends to view the three potential convention center renovation models. They're in the rotunda. They create an opportunity for expansion and greater development of our convention center, and we solicit ideas, thoughts on the proposals as they have been presented. Thank you, Mr.-
Thank you, Mr. Labange, for adjourning motion.
Members, I'd like to ask for adjourned memory of Helen Onahan, who was much loved. She was born in Syria many, many years ago, came here through Detroit, Michigan, and lived in Toluca Lake. She was a great citizen of Toluca Lake, very involved with her teaching in the Grant High School, helping as a very special member of the community. She survived by her daughter Sylvia, sons Terry and Doran, and six grandchildren. Also, I ask for adjourned memory of Alexander Merrill, who is a very special person, lived to be 91, had a courageous fight with cancer, but made it to 91. Was a wonderful person, who had two great kids, Kevin and Anna, and she survived by her oldest brother as well, but she was much loved. She was a former New York Times Family Circle Golf Digest writer for many, many years. Alexander Merrill. And lastly, members, Beau Biden. What a tragedy, what a human being, a model that we should look for as somebody. And I, I know I had opportunity, as many of may have had over the weekend, to watch the celebration of his life in the mass, and he should be remembered as a great servant, public servant in the United States, a member of the armed forces, an elected official, and a great son of a great vice president. I ask for all adjourned memory of Beau Biden.
Thank you. I'm still looking to my right. I see no more to my right. I look to my left. Mr. Sadio.
There's a lead in here. Mr. President, I started that because I wanted everybody to appreciate the sounds and rhythms of a great solceto, Johnny Polanco. He just passed away. And Johnny Polanco is an incredible, incredible solceto. He played with Prince, played with Cachao, Tito Puente, Johnny Pacheco, and many others. He was featured on The Love Boat. He was in many movies. He was an extraordinary, extraordinary bandleader. He was also very involved in Padres, not Padres, in the Wall Las Memorias, AIDS Awareness, the Latino AIDS Awareness Project. Huge, huge supporter. I was on stage with him last year. His sister had died of AIDS many years ago in New York, and so he saw the wall as a kind of monument where he could come and, and address his grieving. And so, he just passed away. He left his beautiful wife, Joanne, several children, grandchildren, and a nation full of solcetos. We're disappointed. We were hoping that he would be at our next Latin jazz music festival, but he's going to be up with the great stars, up in heaven, playing his great music, and may he continue to, you know, do what he does up in the stars. So God bless him, and it's a great sadness for all the solcetos, but he was a great, great human being and leader in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Again, it looks like no more adjourning motions, members. This meeting is adjourned.